We'll start this meeting and it is 6:30. The mission statement for the Lake Mills area school district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
Alright, then I will call this meeting to order and I will invite all those who are able to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, goodness, that is so funny. In addition to the dog present, I will ask for a roll call for attendance.
Brianna Beslock.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Andrea Graham.
Here.
Kirk Lund.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here. Alright. Are there any revisions to the current posted agenda?
I'll move the board approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Alright, if there's no discussion, I will ask for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Alright, agenda has been approved. Now we will move on to Dr. Olsen.
Alright, I'm so excited. I love it when we're back in school and we are able to have students present again at the board meetings. So I'd like to introduce Tracy Voight, who is one of the leaders of the web group at the middle school. And she will introduce the students and the students will take it from there. Ready to share what they've been doing even before school started this year.
Okay, so, right here. So, who talks first? Alright, so might you say your name first?
Hello, my name is Thomas Sherry. I'm a student here at Lake Mills Middle School as well as a web leader. I do algebra, Spanish, and tech ed at the middle school during school, and baseball, basketball, and track outside.
Hello, I'm Rowan Schultz.
Hi, I'm Madeline Quenna.
Hi, I'm Lily Drescher.
Can we get next slide? Thank you. So what is web? Web is an anti-bullying system with the goal of helping students have the best middle school experience we can offer. By doing so, our job is to welcome and support new fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to the middle school. Why web leaders? We use web leaders to help give the most authentic advice and support since we are going through the similar situations ourselves. We do this because the Lake Mills Middle School should be a place where everybody belongs.
Students are more respectful, kind, and well-mannered. The fifth graders love the attention and appreciate all the help that the eighth graders give them on the first day and throughout the whole school year. The web leaders have grown in confidence and maturity as they develop web activities, work with the fifth graders, and celebrate our school. Parents appreciate how the program helps their child transition successfully into the middle school, starting with the before-school welcome phone call from the web leader, because it makes the fifth graders more comfortable before entering into middle school on the first day of school.
We had two days dedicated in the spring where we played games and learned how to teach them to the fifth graders. And we, I'm sorry, we had one day in the spring. And then we had two days in the summer to learn how to teach the games that we learned in the spring to the fifth graders on the orientation day. We also learned, worked with our partners to discuss our tour theme and what we would do for the tour. We learned how to welcome the fifth graders and deal with their difficult attitudes that they may present.[278.33][278.33](laughter) We practiced on how to call them and welcome them to the orientation in the middle school. And we played the games with the fifth graders so that they would learn some skills that they would use in the middle school and how to participate in groups. The games that we played also helped the fifth graders get to know each other and make And these are two pictures from our spring day where we learned how to play the games and how to teach them to our fellow peers.
During the fifth grade orientation, we Fifth grade orientation was a day, it was a fun day where we, for the incoming fifth graders, to get them to learn about the school, staff members, and meet the eighth graders who could help them. We welcomed the fifth graders into the gym with music, dancing, and a tunnel. We took them into a classroom and led them in games, learning, we led them in learning new games. We bought candies, hats, glasses, and dress-up items for the fifth graders and took them on a tour of our school. They liked that a lot. We helped them, we helped the fifth graders use teamwork with each other. Then we had a final ascending, ending assembly. Lastly, after the fifth graders went home, we had lunch to welcome the new students to the school and welcome to the community.
(inaudible)
And these are some of the pictures. The pictures on the right are the pictures of the groups, then top left is from the And these are also some of the pictures from the groups where we did some challenges and games to help with teamwork. And these are just pictures of most of the groups again.
I think we all remember the anxiety and anticipation we had on our first day in a whole different building. Whether it was a new job, new school, or a new house, we all had the same question. Will this next chapter of our lives be good? So here is what we did. The first thing our web leaders did was greet the new students and we helped them with any questions they had. During this time, we also had other web leaders walk through the school to help students find their classes and get into their lockers. We then chose two willing web leaders to lead the school in Energizer to help lighten the mood during the first day of school assembly. After the assembly, web leaders continued to walk through the school to help other These are two pictures of our 29 other web leaders who had helped these students adjust well into the middle school and we worked great as a team.
So I don't know if you guys have any questions at all for us? I can tell you that this program started at the middle school, the school year of 2010, 2011 was the first year we did this. And those web leaders actually had a second challenge. They had to do a presentation. Oh, so the first year we did this was 2010, 2011, and our students had an extra challenge. That was the year new fifth graders and new sixth graders came, so they did two orientations that year. So we've been working on it ever since.
So who came up with this idea and like have you been a part of it from the beginning or?
I have been a part of it from the beginning. When I went to the training, I had no idea what this was about. And then we sat down and they're like, okay, if you're here, you're organizing this. So myself and another student or another teacher, they had asked us if we would run it. She was a former fifth grade teacher. They also have the LINK program at the high school, so this is a nationwide program. And they saw, you know, saw a lot of success with LINK, so we decided to add web to the middle school.
Well, as the parent of a new fifth grader, I can tell you he loved going to the orientation. And then you all put on the carnival too in the spring, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that was like a great introduction too to get them excited to go to the middle school. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, we think it's really important to invite the fourth graders so that they're not so nervous and it's a fun activity for them to come in at least experience the middle school a little bit. So thank you.
Yeah, and it's just great to see the leadership already in, in eighth graders. I mean, even just the phone call, like to hear my child talking on the phone to another student and just nodding, it's like you can talk, like it's okay. So just a simple thing like a phone call, you know, they don't know, you know, it's a lot of texting now and emailing and things. So just simple things like that, I think is great leadership and training.
Today during their recess for the fifth graders, they all went and did activities with the kids too. So they try to do that once a month, do some type of activity with the kids.
That's great, thank you.
It's a terrific program. I wish I had it when I was going into middle school. I might not have the dreams of not being able to find my locker.[611.54][611.54](laughter) Or classroom. So the orientation, how far into the school year does that go?
So we did the orientation the Wednesday before school started. So August 28th, we did it in the morning. The fifth graders show up at eight o'clock and they leave at 11:30. And any new sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to the building, they come at 10 o'clock and then they leave like right around 12:30 after we have pizza with them.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
I feel like I've asked this before, but can you remind me of the process that you'd go through if you wanted to be a web leader?
Sure, should we ask one of them or?
Or, son.
Okay.
With the process of the web leader, you have to fill out a form that basically says, have you got, do you, would you sign this to make sure you didn't get in trouble during school or anything like that? And if you did, you might get kicked off of web. And then you also have to make, write an essay about why you wanted to be on web with about three reasons why.
Can I ask one of your reasons? What inspired you to be on the web team here?
One was because my sister did it and when I was in fifth grade, I had a lot of fun with the group then, so I wanted to do it again.
Thank you.
Alright, are there any more other questions? Well, thank you, thank you so much for being part of this, the children as well as Mrs. Voight. So thank you, thank you, thank you. So, alright.[716.13][716.13](applause)
Just like to snap a picture with the web leaders here at the board, if that's okay?
Yep.
I'll make this quick because I see Officer Johnson and Hugo waiting in the wings. So just wanted to provide an update on the solar project. I know you probably haven't heard a lot and we are just doing some behind-the-scenes work on the environmental portion of the paperwork that is required. This is, as far as I know, one of the last steps we have to take until the funds are released. So they haven't released the funds to the district until, as I said, all of the things check out. So we did submit a fairly lengthy report to the Public Service Commission people. And we are looking at convening the committee in January to start working towards the planning of that and the purchasing of the solar panels and all the items that go with that and coordinate that project for the launch in this summer once school gets out.
Are there any questions?
I did think it was interesting in reading the grant that we submitted that their governing body is very interested in the kinds of energy we would be using to actually implement this. Do we have to like report back on those kind of?
Yes, yeah, so they're very thorough as far as I think not creating more like disruptive environmental conditions by trying to implement the, you know, the resiliency projects. So right, it's very, very detailed. You saw down to the length and width of a trench and how much dirt would be displaced and things like that. So they are very thorough when they are checking through the grant guidelines.
So I did ask a lot of questions prior, because I'm kind of known to do that beforehand. So I don't know if you had a chance to pass them along, but some of them had to do with just the lifespan of the current roofs and what that would be. And then the dollar amount, which you said you might know a little bit more come winter time, since there were some other funds that might be coming in.
Correct, yes. Looking at some matching funds and some other grants that will go along with that, which we can't apply for until we actually implement the project. It's like focus on energy, that funding comes after the project is completed. Originally, in the grant, we had a far larger scale of project and as we've been working with WPPI, we thought we'd be able to sell back more energy than what we were, what we can. And so there's a limit on that. And so we'll probably be looking at scaling back the project to just produce exactly what we would need to run the building off of and not producing excess energy. We don't want to put the money, obviously, into solar panels just to provide energy for the electric company. With, really, the goal is to minimize our monthly electrical bills in each, in the middle school and the elementary. So just providing enough to be able to power on those two buildings. So that's what the work will start doing in January when we come back together again.
I'm sorry, one of the things that I didn't ask, does the grant have a timeline in which that it can be used if for some reason it would need to be postponed for something?
It does. And I'm assuming like a lot of grants that, you know, if something happens and you can't meet that deadline, a lot of times they'll let you apply for an extension of that grant. Right now, I think it'll be a project that we'll be able to do fairly easy in the summer. It's something that can also be done with students in the building for the most part. It's just putting solar panels on top. It's really the roof replacement at the middle school that needs to be done with, with students out of the building. But we would be able to install on the elementary because there's no roof replacement there.
Any other questions? Alright, then.
And then, just because I wanted to put out there that the Wisconsin School Board week is October 6th through the 12th, and I wanted to say it now because we, our next school board meeting will be after the fact. So a big thank you in advance for all of the work that you do as school board members. I don't think people probably realize the amount of time you put into being a school board member and the number of meetings and committees and things like that. And it's very appreciated, especially by myself, to have a supportive school board that really, your first, your best interests are in, for the kids in Lake Mills. And I can tell that, that in every decision you do make, that that's, you know, in the front of your thinking. So there'll be some extra little surprises coming along here once October 6th comes, but we wanted to shadow that, foreshadow it.
Alright, well, then, well, thank you. And we will move on to the School Resource Officer report.
First of all, I guess I apologize for not being here last month, but we had an emergency that came up, so we weren't able to come. So thanks for fitting us in tonight. I think that everybody kind of had a chance to look through our report. I know I did make one modification. I believe that Megan was able to get that out to you guys as far as my training and things like that. I know that Brianna had a question today, and as far as like watching the data and how it trends. And because we kind of did some reworking with how we labeled it at the police department, we should start to be able to see that within the next couple of quarters, like, or semesters. So we haven't really done that as of yet. I think he did put one month together, or one semester, compared one semester, I thought. Thought you did that.
Be the next one.
Okay. He helps me with all the numbers. I don't do that stuff.[1140.32][1140.32](laughter) Yeah, so it's been, last semester of the school year was a great way to finish. I had a really good time with all of the kids. I was constantly busy doing a lot of running around, going a lot of different places. And this year, it kind of seems to be the same, but I'm having a great time anyway. So I don't know if anybody has any other questions about last semester.
Nope. Alright.
Okay. I do just want to take the opportunity to introduce Hugo. I know that I have mentioned him to you guys in the past. Hugo is now at the police department and I have taken him to all of the schools as a facility dog. We actually just got kennels today in all three of the primary schools or the public schools, so that if there's an emergency that I need to tend to, he can be kennelled. But otherwise, the kids have really responded to him. I've actually had two calls at the middle school already where I've had to use him to help calm a student down. So it's, seems to be doing what it's supposed to do. So thank you for that.
Does he want to hug him?
Yes, he does. Yep.
And there's a wonderful story in the leader about that as well.
Yeah, yeah, she did come and she interviewed me and the chief in regards to Hugo, so, yeah, he's wonderful.
So is Hugo like trained to sniff or drugs or is that the, another dog?
That's the canine. He's different, he's a different type of canine.
Okay.
Sniffing out treats in my pocket.[1235.56][1235.56](laughter) Not drugs, treats.[1238.13][1238.13](laughter) No, he's more like a therapy sort of dog or a comfort dog. Yeah, no, just looking for the treats. He's definitely food driven.
Got it.
Yeah. Any other questions about Hugo? Okay, would you guys like an opportunity to meet him?
Yeah. I can just walk up behind him?
Okay, now what are your? Yep, I just opened it and he's gone. Yeah. He does wherever he goes.
in the school. She's always mobbed by elementary kids. I think this is going to triple that effect.
Any other questions? Do we have any other questions? Alright. Thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you guys. Alright, now we move on to the principals and their building reports. So we'll start with Mr. Vogel.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good. Just a little write-up on the start of the year. So the beginning of the school year has been off to a great start. Teachers on top of getting ready for classes have engaged, already engaged in professional development focused on assessments and some grading practices slash norms and already worked on creating grade level rubrics for our reading readiness building goal, which sets a good start and a strong foundation for, for kids this year. Our teachers as well, safety has been a priority with teachers participating in essential training to ensure a secure environment for everyone. And I give thanks to Officer Jess for organizing that. We met as a district for presentation and then the high school was the first one of the three buildings to do some breakout sessions. So again, thanks to Officer Jess for, for helping us out. Props to our LINK crew. Our LINK crew did another amazing job welcoming our freshman class, ensuring that they feel connected and supported as they transition to LMHS. Homecoming preparations are already underway. We have our first homecoming building meeting with each of the individual classes on Thursday. And that's, again, builds excitement throughout the school. Student involvement is thriving already with a wide range of extracurriculars, not just like athletics, but NHS, interact, chess club, drama club, musical auditions, YOST, FFA, LM United, TRIM, Student Council have all started activities here in the last couple of weeks. Wanted, well, that's the, my quick summary of the start of the school year. I just wanted to give a public thanks to our custodial crew led by Nick and Ryan for yielding, getting our building ready. Spectacular job. And then I wanted to give another shout out to the kitchen crew, Kathy and the ladies for doing a great job at this beginning of the year. So that's a good, good start so far.
Are there any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Now we will move on to Chuck.
Hi, everyone. I guess I want to start with a quick thank you. So as you heard, our web leaders just shared, so that is really how our, our year starts. And I wanted to also give, so Tracy's here representing the web advisors, but also want to say thanks to Alexa and, Alexa Halverson and Kathy Rosecki. They do a ton of work getting those kids ready. As you could see, it really makes a huge difference in the start of our year when those, when our fifth graders feel like they kind of know our building and they can look and an anecdote is I was walking in the first day or standing in the doors the first day, you know, kids are coming in and I saw a little fifth grader kind of coming in and you could tell was pretty nervous. And I was about ready to like, oh, let's go, you know, and, and one of the web leaders just swap it, swooped in and just like grabbed him right out of my arms, like, we got you, we're taking, and took him right down to their locker. So they do amazing work and it's, it's really appreciated. Again, it makes our, the, the beginning of the year for the fifth graders and then for our whole building really run a lot, a lot smoother. So thanks to all the work of both our, our student leaders and their advisors there. We've had a really good start to our year as well. We started this year on a, on a different note, we, we haven't done this in the past, but we started with like an assembly on day one with our entire school. And it was, it was pretty awesome. We had the web leaders actually kick it off with a, like a Energizer activity, got the kids kind of engaged right off the bat. And then we went through our core values and talked about those at the middle school. And we also then spent some time talking about our expectations throughout our building. It was just a really nice way to start the year, kind of on a, on a fun, but also making sure everybody, you know, we all shared a common understanding of what the expectations were in the building. So that was a great, a great start to the year. Our teachers, I can't say enough about the preparation that they have put in to be ready for this year. As Kail said, we've done some training before the year. But we, we had, I think, eight new staff members and they've been phenomenal. Both the new, the new folks that have come in have been outstanding, but also our veteran staff, just making sure that they felt ready and felt like they had everything they needed to be successful. We've had a really great start in that way. Our teachers are just ready, ready from day one for our kids walking through the doors. They knew, they, they had spent time learning who their students were and felt confident that they were able to teach them. And I'm feeling really confident that they've, they've done such a nice job with them. We've had a focus as a staff on, on really building community in our classrooms. So we've really talked a lot about circles and using circles in our classrooms. And that's been like a real focal point over these first two weeks, especially in that core time that we have. So our teachers have been, we, our lighthouse team has put together some presentations and kind of helped facilitate those circles, knowing that as we get into the year, the teachers will kind of take that over. But that's been a really positive introduction. We know that, you know, we talked about it in our staff meeting about the being upstream, right? And the idea that like, you know, we can deal with the challenges that come, but if we can get upstream and kind of address them before they become challenges, that's really the, the best way to do it. And we think with, with building that community, that's how we can, we can do a lot of that upstream work. We also have our sports getting kicked off. We have cross-country and volleyball. Our football team, although it's a club team, that's been going for a little bit. But, and so those are, I think everybody on the football team that I know of is a, is a Lake Mills Middle School student in the seventh and eighth grade. But we also have our, our club, or excuse me, our, our girls volleyball team and our cross-country teams got started this week, or this week and last week. And so they're underway. They had their first volleyball game where they did really well. So it was a great start to the year there. Cross-country hasn't competed yet, but they will really soon. And then we're getting, now we're getting into our first round of our IREDDI assessments. So our IREDDI assessments started for some students today. They will go over the next couple of weeks in both reading and math. And that really helps our staff, again, look at how, how their students are doing and where they need to support on a more individualized basis based on those test scores. So it's busy, but it's been a really, a really good and positive start to the year. I've had a lot of great conversations with our staff and I feel like a lot of, a lot of positivity coming, coming out of our, out of our, out of our doors and our walls these days. So it's been really fun.
Are there any questions?
Just interested, Chuck, on, you have the sports world that you've got at the middle school. That's terrific. Are there many clubs?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we'll, we'll get fired up here with our clubs in, in the next couple of weeks. So, and we're, we're, that's actually an area of focus for us this year as well, just kind of building out our club. So we're actually, Mr. Flirkey, our librarian, our library media specialist, and So we're actually, Mr. Flirkey, our librarian, our library media specialist and, and Ms. Weiskie are going to be starting like a, it's not going to be called Student Council, but more or less you can think of it like a Student Council, a student leadership group. So that's going to be started, they're working on kind of the application process for that. And then Mr. Flirkey also runs several clubs out of the libraries. And so he usually lets the, kind of gets all the pieces in order before we get those going, so that he feels kind of like, you know, all the, the beginning of school year stuff is kind of out of the way. But in the next couple of weeks, those clubs will get started. And then again, our focus is, I spent some time with Tasha this, this summer, really talking about how do we make sure that we can, we can support the clubs and the club leaders over the course of this year? So we have, we're excited to be able to try to offer and grow our club offerings throughout the course of the year.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you so much. And next up is Wendy.
Hello. We're off to a great start as well. I'd like to thank Tanya and Erin for supporting this summer. We had 13 staff go to the Professional Learning Community Conference in Madison, and it really helped to set the tone for our year that we're ready to be excellent and do whatever it takes. So that was a really great start. So beginning of the year started with a lot of learning as well, especially with our new literacy curriculum. Thanks to Erin and Michelle Cook also for getting that off to a great start for us. And of course, our Ready, Set, Go event where it's really a celebration of students coming in with their families, getting to meet all of our staff and just starting the year off with, on a great foot. We really work on establishing a lot of routines. You know, it's amazing, you don't realize it till the beginning of the year comes again, but the kindergarteners, they really just need to learn the very basics of how to take their tray and how you hold it and, you know, all of those things that we take a lot of time teaching in the beginning of the year in all of the different places in the school. We also brought a bus in this year to make sure all of our students knew appropriate safety. And Officer Johnson joined us as well for that. So even if they don't regularly take the bus, they will at some point for a field trip. So we work in all of our different environments on how we set up expectations and routines for all students. We're really working on building our community. Not only our class communities are strong through morning meetings, but we're really working on our school-wide community. We're having monthly assemblies and our first one started off, we're calling it our Paw Pack Assembly. We're really going with the Elcat. In fact, Mr. Shanafal, our music teacher, he wrote a song called "We're Possum." That's possum. Some fourth graders accidentally heard that as possum and they were kind of playing, playing possum. So that's a whole other story. But at our, at our assemblies, we're really working on teaching students our values, celebrating our successes, recognizing individuals in classes for all of their hard work and just putting a lot of investment in, into that. As you know, we're in year two of our math adoption bridges, getting out into the classrooms. I'm just seeing so much engagement and students and staff building confidence in that program and the work they're doing. So that's been exciting. I'm hearing all positive feedback on our, so far, it's again, the beginning of the year, but our literacy adoption of being a reader and being a writer with collaborative classroom. Obviously, teachers are putting in a lot of hard work because it is a new curriculum, but it is something they're excited about. Students are excited about it. It's authentic reading and writing and everyone is just loving it so far. So we've had all positive things to say. So overall, just a really positive start to the year. We also have already some extra support going this early in the year with interventions based on both end of the school year last year and summer school information that we're able to not really waste any time and get started with some students while we gather, you know, new data for this year. So we're off to a good start.
Are there any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're into the part for board reports and Tanya, if you want to talk about the referendum?
Sure, you know, we talked about having this as a standing item until after the election, but we did a presentation today, Amy, you were a part of that, to Club 55. So we had about 13 people in attendance and asked a lot of questions. We were there almost two hours talking with members and they asked really, really great questions. We are, we have an opportunity coming up here this Thursday for our first open house session where it's an informational night. This will not be a presentation, but instead stations in the lower gym of the high school. So there'll be a financial station and then one about the elementary addition, one about the middle school work, and then one for the high school work. And then Kale and I will be taking individuals on tours that want to see those actual spaces. Because I think once you see those lower level classrooms, you'll see the lower gym. You'll go upstairs and look at the band and choir rooms, you see for yourself. Some of those needs are very apparent. So this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 is the first one at the high school. And then we have another one Monday, October 14th, and then Thursday, October 17th. And we've been telling people that if you really want to tour the high school or any one of the sites and these dates don't work for you, there'd be somebody willing to take you through any of the buildings at any time, just make an appointment and we'll let you see those things firsthand, we'll get you in there. I did appreciate just kind of going back and Brianna, you were at the football game for quite a while with youth night. We had a lot of parents and family members and Tasha was there too. So we really, just the goal is to try to get that information out to as broad of an audience as possible before the election. So we've got many more presentations coming up, but we're kind of out in full gear here to get the word out.
All right.
I should mention also, we, I had the column in the paper last week. So this week, the second column will be going out. The staff was emailed a copy of my column. It'll be focusing on safety and security this week.
Yeah, I would just encourage anyone in the community, maybe that hasn't been at the high school, you know, for myself. Like I had kids at the elementary school and now middle school, so I've been in those buildings. But it is really eye-opening to, to actually be in those spaces and especially, you know, the area of the high school that needs to be renovated. You know, those are the areas that, you know, a lot of our most at-risk students are spending their time. So of course, the teachers do their best to make those spaces welcoming and, you know, wonderful for what, even in the condition that they are. But it is really eye-opening just to see the spaces yourself and see what needs to be improved. So, and if you've been to other, you know, newer schools around in other communities, it is pretty eye-opening to see some of our spaces that need to be improved. So I would really, really encourage anyone to come and actually see our buildings, so.
And I think we had said before too, that this might not necessarily be something that specifically hones in on the academic piece, but there's something to be said when, you know, we have an amazing building and facility for students to work and learn in. There's a tie into, you know, putting that pride into their own schoolwork then. And so then I guess I would encourage you, as the WASB conferences I've attended, say, you as an adult can make opinion, but have you talked to the people there, which in this case would be the kiddos, right? Like, so if I've talked to a high schooler, say, like, how could I improve that lower gym for you? What do you think about it? Like, how does, how is the air or not? Or, you know, all those good things, because they're, they're the kids there every day. And, and I think their opinions matter too. And it might be really interesting to see what you find out. So I encourage you to talk to the kiddos themselves. So.
So Erin, I don't know if you have any opinion on the spaces you see at the high school. You've seen the new English classrooms and the library and then you've probably seen the other spaces that haven't been touched.
Yeah, I honestly haven't really looked at the new referendum, but I've seen pictures and it looks like it could be a good addition.
All right, moving right into Erin's part.
Sure.
I'd like to introduce Erin Williams. She is our 2024-25 student board representative. And today we're going to have her take the oath of office, which officially makes her part of the board. Go ahead and raise your hands.
I, Erin Williams, who has been duly appointed to the Board of Education of Lake Mills Area School District, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Wisconsin and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, terrific. Let's welcome Erin.
Well, with you now being an official member, we will ask for your student board report.
Okay, so to start off, the first day of school this year was a little bit different because usually we have the link orientation in the beginning of school. But this year it was a week before and it ran pretty smoothly, I thought. And instead, in the beginning, we had our yearbook pictures. So like the first two hours, we had our yearbook pictures. And then the rest of the day, we had our day one schedule just shortened. Then homecoming this year has been started planning by Student Council. The overall theme is holidays. Seniors chose the Fourth of July. Juniors chose Halloween. Sophomores chose winter holidays like Christmas and Hanukkah. And the freshmen chose Valentine's Day. And then athletics this year have also been going well. Last week, football won 40 to 20. And then soccer tied the first conference game. Tennis senior night is this Tuesday against Columbus. Volleyball also has a game this Tuesday against Columbus. And then musical auditions were September 9th and 10th. And then rehearsal is starting this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the musical this year?
It's called Something Rotten.
Okay, thank you, Erin. All right, time for community input. And we have only one, one group signed up, the Lake Mills Education Association, Brenda Morris.
Good evening. We are representatives of the Lake Mills Education Association. I'm President Brenda Morris. Our co-presidents are Renee Mitchell, right here, and Becky Kiefer couldn't be here tonight. Our treasurer is Tracy Voight, who you saw earlier. And our secretary is Melinda Oats, who's also a link crew leader. We've had a good start to the school year so far and I think I'm going to end up repeating a lot of what the principals said already. But our elementary school teachers are excited and busy diving into the new language arts curriculum. Middle school teachers are optimistic about the work with Dr. Briggs to improve climate, improve climate at the middle school. And high school teachers are looking forward to developing student literacy skills and planning this year's homecoming. And overall, we anticipate another great year and we hope to continue building our positive relationships with students, families, administration, the school board and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then now we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following. August 19th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. August 19th, 2024 board workshop proceedings. September 9th, 2024 finance personnel committee proceedings. August treasures report and vouchers and invoices and the personnel report.
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of those items? Or discussion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. Now on to our action items. The 2024-25 Lake Mills Area School District Safety Plan. As it's said in the public content, we're required to submit a school safety plan by January 1st. And we're, we are obtaining approval far in advance of the first requirements. And the drills will be submitted in December board meeting and once they're conducted this fall, so. All right.
I'll move the board approve the LMASD safety plan as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Are there any questions or concerns?
Just a comment, I thought it was quite thorough, the plan and, you know.
Kale actually works on the safety plan. He's the head of that. Next Tuesday, the admin team will be meeting with representatives from the police department and will be furthering this plan into developing a very specific reunification plan. So we're really starting to add on a lot of details into the plan in writing.
And along those lines, your column, I think this week in the leaders talks about safety specifically and the improvements we can make if the referendum is passed with safety of the high school vestibule and then also the bus barn. And that specifically talks about the reunification. So I think, look for that in the newspaper this week.
And I think along those lines too, I would always in this case rather be proactive than reactive. And so I think as much as you hear in the news of other unfortunate happenings within school districts, this is exactly why we try to be proactive in a lot of these various safety and measures across everywhere, so.
All right, is there any other questions, concerns or comments? All right, hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Ken Imers?
Aye.
Andrea Graham?
Aye.
Kirk Lund?
Aye.
Brianna Beslik?
Aye.
Amy Litcher?
Aye. All right, moving on to elementary staffing. I'll turn it over to Tanya to discuss.
Right, so we've, we've had an influx of 4K students. In fact, we denied another open enrollment student as of today. So I think that bodes well for the Lake Mills School District that people really want their kids to attend here. It goes into the referendum as well. We only have four classrooms, our class sizes are high, so they're, you know, we have class sizes of 24, 23, 21 and 21, when the class size recommendations are not to exceed 18 in a classroom for 4K, which we would like to do, but we don't have space to have a fifth section of 4K. So with those morning sections being a little bit higher and the reason for that, that they're just a couple of students higher and not equal is the fact that we've got the wraparound care and trying to accommodate parents' schedules. But Wendy had approached us about getting some additional help in the 4K classrooms. I know the board had discussed even trying to carve out a fifth, you know, classroom even yet this year. And when Wendy had discussed that with our 4K teachers, they felt that routines had already been established and relationships set and they, they really did not want to do that with four-year-olds, which can be hard. So the request is to at a minimum have a halftime 4K para in the morning, but ideally she would like to have a full-time para in the afternoon. And I think before we go on and talk about the special ed position, that's due to some additional move-ins in the early childhood program. If you have questions from Wendy about the difference between the halftime and the full-time 4K para, she can definitely address that and those needs. So I don't know, Wendy, maybe you just want to come up to the mic. As she's walking up, I did, Tasha had some scenarios in there of, of what the actual cost for salaries would be for those positions. And then if that person did take benefits, what the additional cost would be for benefits? We obviously don't know if an employee takes benefits until they're hired. So that's why you have so many different dollar amounts in there.
Yes, so on behalf of the 4K teachers and myself and our school, we would like to request ideally a full, a full day para, but at least a halftime para. Our numbers are larger in the morning. However, when talking with the teachers, they asked for any opportunity to have someone in addition for a full day. The way that person would really be utilized is they like to, they like to separate into small groups. Now imagine 24 little, little four-year-olds in one room. And they are doing foundations of, of our literacy and math curriculum as well. So they like to separate at times into three groups and kind of rotate, you know, and each, each para and the teacher are all working on something very specific with those students. That would help that and they would basically stagger their schedules. So that person would be able to be with them both morning classes and both afternoon, you know, classes as well. We have had someone that's been helping us out part-time just in the morning and she would be a great asset and able to easily, if this position is approved, easily proceed into this role, whether it be halftime or full-time. Part of the reason we're additionally asking for a full-time in the afternoon, we have some students who speak primarily. have some students who speak primarily Spanish and are learning English, also students that are coming from the Head Start program in the morning. And so, some of those additional needs in the afternoon would have it be very beneficial to have another, another person to be able to support, to support our young learners. Any questions?
Thanks, Wendy. The one question I had is, do you, do you think there will be any difficulty in getting a halftime special education teacher? Like, you know, sometimes half-times are not attractive to people.
Sure. I totally, totally understand that question. We do have, we do have someone in mind who has filled that role in the past as a long-term sub when we needed it. It has not been yet presented because there's lots of moving parts and we wanted to wait for, for approval. But we do have a few people that we think could slide in and be a good fit in the part-time role. But I agree with you, Ken. Typically, it is harder to get a, a part-time person. But in this case, we do have a few people who we think would be willing to take that on. I'd open it up to Jamie if she has any additional thoughts.
And that was the second half of that position that we had discussed in the finance personnel committee was just the need for a halftime special ed teacher because we would be keeping Kenzie McCann in the early childhood classroom because there's now a need to extend that to an AM and a PM section just due to the number of students and the needs that are in that room. So, the halftime special ed teaching position would actually cover Kenzie McCann's special ed position in the afternoon in the 4K and the kindergarten classrooms.
So, currently in 4K, each teacher has their own para morning and afternoon, correct?
Correct.
So, this person, and they would be able to adjust their current schedule. So, this person could then float to their rotational times to help as instructional support.
Yes. They already have their schedule built that way because we were hoping to try to pull somebody from kindergarten or somewhere else. And it's just been too challenging. So, yes, they do have their schedule already planned that way.
I mean, I would have loved to add another section. And I have to tell you, we've been, it's just so hard because the enrollment, we just don't have those enrollment numbers till often the first day of school, people enroll. So, we just want to encourage everyone next year to try to enroll in 4K right away because I know we would have liked to have supported a fifth section even back in the spring. But I totally understand the teachers' concerns of.
And the teachers really.
Upsetting the apple cart at this point. So, I mean, I would be in support of a full-time para, just to have those small groups going and even just to relieve the classroom space a little bit and, you know, pulling groups out into the little vestibules and things. Because you just think about 24 kids in a room with all those adults and everything. So, just to have more adults that we can then have that ratio, you know, go down student-to-teacher ratio. So.
Right. The 4K teachers really appreciated the board's discussion and willingness to add a fifth. And they were really excited about it, but just felt this was in students' families', everyone's best interest at this time. I think we will look at numbers, but I think we're hoping for the consideration for next year, just to go in with that mindset, with that planning.
Well, I think too, like, if there is some outside-of-the-box idea that hasn't been thought of, to be able to, you know, hold off maybe on class groupings for a little bit longer in case we run into this scenario, right? Anything outside the box because when you start them off young, the smaller, the better, right? Like, the class size really matters. And so, yes, if there's an outside-of-the-box idea we haven't thought of to try and help with that scenario too would be great.
I think, you know, even when we had some of our lowest class sizes at 80 in 4K with five sections, it's still 16 4K students. So, I mean, that's about where we want to be. So, now with, you know, 89 students, five sections would put us at 18, which already gets us to the max. So, I think, as we were discussing going in next year with that planning for that fifth section, regardless of what the enrollment is, we know that it's still going to land us between, you know, 16 to 18 students per class. So, we still want to be in that position instead of waiting till it gets to the point. And now it seems like enrollment has recovered from what we saw a couple of years ago.
All right. Then, and I, we have three scenarios. Sorry, one more thing. We have three scenarios in here. Is scenario one your main proposal of a full-time para and a halftime special ed teacher?
Correct.
Okay.
And that dollar amount is like worst-case scenario if, you know, the positions, you know, had full benefits with that. Like I said, it could be, if there were no benefits assigned to that, then we're at $48,853 instead.
So, where would that put us within our budget?
I mean, it would add to our budget, obviously. You know, we'd have to look for different cost savings as we go. And, you know, it really just would be extra expenses added on.
So, as we were doing our board workshop prior, we were, one of our goals we were discussing was finance and transparency and things like that. And so, if this were to be something that we would consider at the end of the year, do you feel like we would still be at that 20% fund balance or above?
Yes.
I think pretty comfortably. I mean, even now going in, say if this adds $50,000 to our budget with the last several of years, coming in, you know, very strongly in the black at the end of the year, I feel pretty comfortable with this move. If I, if we would have been running a deficit the last few years and then now adding another position, I'd be a little more hesitant to look at this. But I think, I mean, we don't have anything out of the ordinary in this budget. In fact, if the referendum passes, that helps us with the maintenance side of the budget, which gives us even a little bit of cushion to move some money around this year.
And of course, more FTE is helpful, you know, as we look at our more students more. So, the thing that's tricky is like the special education needs aren't, you know, reimbursed fully. So, that's difficult, you know. And we have to meet the needs of those students by federal law. So.
So, in that one, at least, we know this is a one-year thing. I mean, we, that's the number we can't predict is early childhood numbers. And we don't really, we can't control that. So, next year, we might be down to just a half of a section again and going back to not needing this halftime special ed teacher. And caseloads change every year. So, it's just this year, we didn't have room within the special ed caseloads to absorb the 4K kindergarten needs.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for a motion.
I'll move the board approve the addition of a full-time para and a halftime FTE special ed teacher.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right, it passes. For then, our next action item is approval of overnight field trips. And the board is being asked to approve the National FFA Convention in October, the FFA leadership in November, the FFA halftime leadership in January, the FFA leadership in March, girls softball in April, and boys baseball in April, and then a Lake Mills senior music trip in November. So.
I want to be part of the FFA. All sorts of fun trips. It's amazing.
So, these are the things that, you know, the kids often remember. And if there was a financial burden, we have the fund's ability to set up for students if they would ask to be a part of something and they couldn't afford it.
Correct. I know Tasha's worked with our school counselors, especially the high school counselors where they tend to take, you know, a little bit more costly trips. But right, we want to make sure that this doesn't prohibit any student from benefiting from these trips. So.
I'll move the board approve the overnight field trips as presented. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost for any reason.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right. Substitute pay rates. This was an action item from before. And it's just being brought up again. So.
No new information. We made the adjustment based on the board's request from last time.
I'll move the board approve substitute pay rates as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a note, I think, you know, there's certainly a fiscal piece to this, but really, this is all part of retaining good quality teachers. This is something we really need, basically. Especially if you look around the different communities around us, it's a very competitive environment. So, this is important, I think, to.
I think with that being said, if you could keep us posted as far as what the teachers on call shares with you in regards to people who are willing now to go to our district versus other districts, if they share that information, that would be helpful.
Yes, we'll be tracking that monthly.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right. Finally, the action item is gifts. And always, for the continued support, we thank so much the community and are in awe of your financial support of this district.
I move the board to thank the generous donors for the continued support of students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District, the Lake Mills Moravian Church for providing packaged snacks to staff as a start-of-the-year treat, the National Christian Foundation through a grant from the Lake Mills Community Purse Foundation for their $1,613.20 donation to the mill, the district's food pantry for students and families, the anonymous Lake Mills donor who contributed $7,000 to support students in need, covering lunch accounts, school supplies, clothing, and any other needs for students.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right. Upcoming board agenda items future, in the future. So, Monday, this coming Monday, September 23rd is our annual meeting at the high school, LMC, at 6:00 PM. And Monday, October 21st, our action items will be start college now request, early graduation requests, fall sports report, enrollment update, and update on continuous report, continuous performance report. All right. Then I will, we will move for a proposed motion into executive session.
I'll move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 (1) (C), considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically the district administrator's goals.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded. I will ask for a roll call vote on the motion.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. So, we are now, we can move into executive session.